We don't have any electronic participation, so pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Connor. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion.
Second.
Second. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Baron.
Yes.
Mr. Eileen.
Yes.
Mrs. Laurie.
Yes.
Mr. Connor.
Yes.
Dr. Gupta.
Yes.
Mr. DePaul.
Yes.
Mr. Gilio.
Yes.
Dr. Farmer.
Yes.
Mr. Poe.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Next is consent agenda. Is there, I can hear myself.
Yeah.
Is there a motion to approve? Let me, I'll let them settle it down. There a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion.
Second. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Baron.
Yes.
Mr. Eileen.
Yes.
Mrs. Laurie.
Yes.
Mr. Connor.
Yes.
Dr. Gupta.
Yes.
Mr. DePaul.
Yes.
Mr. Gilio.
Epstein.
Dr. Farmer.
Yes.
Mr. Poe.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Next one is new business policy review, Dr. Majid.
Okay. All right. Good evening, everyone. Tonight, you'll see some policies. All of the policies have gone through the various board committees, and it's here tonight for first read. If you don't mind, I want to touch on one of them. If you look at II-CB-R, and I know that we've received a lot of questions about this particular one, so I wanted to make sure that we addressed it. And you'll see there that, you'll see some of the strike throughs there, and it was a recommendation, if someone had a felony, we recognize if there's a barrier crime, that is a no, you can't work here. But if there's someone with a felony that doesn't fall within those confines of a barrier crime, and Ms. Brown, you will correct me if I'm wrong at any point, then those are individuals that would have to, it was at the discretion of the superintendent originally in that policy, which is not acceptable. I don't set policy. And so the recommendation was to change that to the school board, so that if it's something that rose to that level, those would be the individuals that, that would come to this level for you all to make a decision on versus, versus me. Did you want to add anything else to that, Ms. Brown?
That, that describes it.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Since we had so many responses, I actually pulled up the Virginia Code, which is Virginia Code 63 dot two dash seventeen nineteen, which defines a barrier crime. So I thought it would make sense to read it for the public consumption, so they'll know what a barrier crime is, and those will be automatically excluded. But it does not exclude all felonies, just barrier crimes. And I'll read it. It says, Virginia Code 63 dot two dash seventeen nineteen defines barrier crimes as specific criminal offenses that prevent individuals from obtaining approval to work in child welfare agencies, foster homes, or adoptive homes. These definitions have been updated over time, but generally include a range of felonies and serious misdemeanor offenses, such as certain violent crimes, crimes involving children or adults with disabilities, drug-related offenses, depending on the specific context within the statute. What barrier crime means, a barrier crime is a past conviction or education of delinquency that makes a person ineligible to approve a work in settings where they would have contact with vulnerable populations, such as child placing agencies, foster homes, and adoptive homes or schools. The statute aims to protect children and other vulnerable individuals by preventing those with a history of certain serious offenses from being in positions of trust and authority. Examples of barrier crimes, examples provided in the statute are offenses against children, crimes like child abuse and neglect, taking indecent liberty with children, or possession of child pornography are listed as barrier crimes. Felony offenses, convictions for various felonies, including certain violent crimes like murder, robbery, and abduction, as well as felony violation of a protective order, may be considered barrier crimes. If you are applying to be a foster parent involved in child placing agency in Virginia, the agency must check your criminal history. If your record contains a conviction for a barrier crime, you may be denied approval or employment. So what that is saying, that's not every felony, because many of the responses we got thought that it eliminates all felonies. But if it is a, a barrier crime or a violent felony, then it's automatically denied. But if there are other felonies that don't meet this criteria, then those individuals would have to come before the school board, not the superintendent or the superintendent designate, but the school board to be, to receive approval, to be approved to work in these environments.
Mr. Biden.
Thank you for that. First, I do want to highlight your willingness to take this on, knowing that this is a, something that we got a lot of responses from, and, and not trying to hide it or shuffle it down, but actually taking it on. This is a lot, and, and so I appreciate that. And I also want to emphasize that, the first change on this is that there's moving from the, the request to go to the superintendent and have the superintendent having unilateral authority on these matters. It's actually elevating it to the board to make the decision, which brings more accountability, not less. And I think that's really important to understand. I think the issue is the list of qualifications or conditions that have to be met in order for them to apply for an exception. And what's added here is, it seems like this is a list of and, not or. Am I, am I correct in saying that? So it's, it has to meet all three of these criteria in order to, to be even considered for consideration, correct?
Yes, correct.
Okay. And I think that's where the issue is coming in, is because we added in the, the language that says that a disqualifying conviction, disqualifying conviction has to be for a misdemeanor to even be considered. So any non-barrier felony offense would not qualify. It also states here, based on this, if it's an and statement, a disqualifying conviction was for a misdemeanor, and it has to have occurred more than five years previously. So some misdemeanor offense also has to be at least five years old to even be considered. I think that places, in my opinion, an unnecessary level of restriction to people who are applying to volunteer with the schools. So that's where I'm, I'm seeing maybe the issue and the struggle and concern, at least from my perspective.
But I also want to say that some of these emails I was reading, that we have to remember, that was done under our past administration, and this administration does things differently. So while people are saying that it just wasn't followed up on, I think this administration is following up on things. So it's a different mindset.
You want to say it, Dr. Farmer?
Mm-hmm. I agree with you. This is a different team.
Is this something, is this something that you want to go back to the board committee for them to take another look at it?
I think if the board is in agreement, upward or downward. Mr. Connor, you wanted to say something?
Well, I'm thinking that, and I, and the clarification is, under one, it says the qualifying conviction was for a misdemeanor. And I think what they're asking, it should say for misdemeanor or non-disqualifying felony.
That's what I think, expanding some of the language to include, and.
I think that's what the, I think that's just, in other words, there are felonies that have been committed over five years that aren't barrier crimes. And that's, and those are the people, go ahead.
But that's, that's what's included in this. It says, in order to be considered, it needs to be, it was for a misdemeanor. So if it was a felony, you can't do it. And the, it's already in the code that says if it's a barrier crime, we don't have to repeat it here.
Right. But I'm saying, what the, what, and I think what he's saying is, there are felonies that aren't barrier crimes. Non-violent offense, but it was considered a felony, then, you know, like a theft, somebody wrote a bad check for over the felony amount, convicted five years ago, now they want to work in the school, then we need to, I think, it still should come to the board for approval, but it should expand more than for a misdemeanor or a non-barrier felony to be considered.
So do we need this to go back to the board committee?
Or can we make the amendment as a board?
Yep. You can.
You know what I'm saying? You wrote a bad check. You, you bought a stock that was insider trading. You were a tax accountant, and you made a mistake, but it was considered a felony by law. And you had to go to the, a federal detention center for thirteen months because you did something tax, which I know personally, someone that faced that. No violence, no, it just was, it was a violation of IRS law. It was a felony. So five years from now, that person comes and says, hey, I want to volunteer as a coach. We should be able to look at that as a school board and say, well, it's not a non-barrier. It was a felony, but it wasn't barrier, and it wasn't violent, so maybe we should give that person a chance. And I think that's what.
Yes. Response. And perhaps you could bring, because I think the only thing that was really added in the qualifying conditions is the fact that it was for a misdemeanor.
Bring it back to policy group and we bring it back.
So why, I guess maybe some, some understanding of why we added that language versus just leaving it as over five years ago and not a barrier crime. What was the thinking in adding to that restriction misdemeanors?
So I would suggest is.
Ms. Brown?
Go ahead. Somebody wants?
Yes. And I think the purpose of that was to make sure that all felonies would go before the board, to have that approval, and it not happen at the superintendent level. So with the language added there, it was just to capture the definition of the barrier crime and where the felony was referenced, to make sure that there is knowledge and accountability beyond the superintendent's charge.
Okay. So what's the word that you want added?
Well, I would say, I'd like to make a motion that we pull policy and back to, but we can approve the other ones that are not under question.
Before, before you make your motion, they make men, they say here, the disqualifying conviction, we already have it, it's already in the code, that there are certain non-barrier felonies that would be accepted, that are not barriers, that are not disqualifying already in existence. So what they're saying here is that the disqualifying conviction, they're, they're very specific about this. The disqualifying conviction was not a felony. So they were disqualified for a reason. At this point right now, if I understand it correctly, there are some felonies that are not disqualifying. That's right. So your example is already taken care of. This is just saying that if it's a disqualifying conviction, that is a felony, it, it's done. If it's a disqualifying, if the disqualifier is already defined as a felony, we're only allowing disqualifiers that are defined as misdemeanors. Where non-disqualifying felonies are not, are not going to disqualify the person.
So it doesn't need to go back?
It doesn't need to go.
Which policy work group did it came from?
Which work group? Which work, HR work?
HR. So who are the board members on the HR policy? Who is the second board member? Was there a discussion about these issues? Would you want to put some light on? Yeah, go ahead.
We didn't get into the details of these criteria. We just looked at the emphasis on the approval at the board level. So the disqualifying conviction and all of that, it was just mainly that it would get approval from the board if it was something that was a felony. Because, and to add on to that, if, excuse me, if you were to include felony, if a disqualifying conviction was a misdemeanor or a felony, that would mean that the murderers and the child abusers would be able to question the board.
Yeah.
Not if it's, it's a barrier crime. That's already included in the criteria.
It says right here, we are making the exception for exactly what you're trying to prevent. If the disqualifying conviction was for a misdemeanor, and if you had felony in there, then it does include barrier crimes.
Not because number three says it can't be a barrier crime. There are some misdemeanors that are considered barrier crimes.
That's the point. You don't change it. Because already, the, the felonies that are not barrier crimes, they're, wouldn't be considered for not being a volunteer.
Yeah.
So I'm saying, I, I don't see the reason for adding the dis, misdemeanor qualifier in, in, in the first place. I think we had it covered under the previous two conditions.
Previous or following?
The previous. The, what exists currently with, with, was just the disqualifying conviction occurred more than five years before the date, and it was not a barrier crime. I think that covers everything that's of concern. I'm not sure why we added in that it also had to be a misdemeanor to be qualified for reconsideration. That doesn't, to me.
So just remove it?
I think we should just remove it.
Oh.
All right. I'm with that. I'll take it back to the committee.
No, I think there's.
You just say remove it.
Remove one item, right?
That word.
Modify the language. That's what.
You take out one.
I think we take out number one and just leave it with the two criteria that were there before, which is.
Disqualifying conviction.
The attorney, just to be.
The conviction was not a barrier crime. So the word, that statement won, and peripherally won, the disqualifying.
Mm-hmm. What the superintendent is saying is, you want to say what you.
I, I just wanted to ask, because I know that before we brought the policies to the committee, it worked through the attorney, because there were some other things that came up that brought this to that level, that we needed to revisit this. I would ask, if the decision is to pull this and it go back to committee, could Ms. Brown have an opportunity to reconnect with the attorney, just to make sure if there's any changes, that we're still sound, legally sound in what we're doing, before there's a move tonight to remove something that they've given us guidance on, if that's okay?
Yeah. Also, let me see, she was also on the call. The attorney was on the call, so a lot of this language, she was somewhat approval.
So my motion to pull this policy and have it revisited with the attorney and the committee before we bring it back to the full board. That's my motion.
Is there a second? I'll second that. Sir. So is there, so we got the revised policy review. Is there a motion to approve the policies?
Motion.
Go ahead.
These are just for first read.
Oh, this is for first read?
Everything's for first read.
Okay. So it's not action item. All right. You're good. Other question?
Okay.
Other questions? Move on to item two, teacher performance evaluation system and observation cycle. Dr. Majid.
All right. Dr. Davis will, will cover that portion. Good evening, everyone. I will go through this pretty quickly. I just wanted to make a general awareness that Ms. Brown did a wonderful job a couple weeks ago, providing some training on the new observation cycle, and we got great feedback from our administrators on that new observation cycle and our teacher performance evaluation system. The goal was continuity consistency across the board. So we were able to implement that, and we'll be doing some additional training on that teacher performance evaluation system to ensure that we're giving high-quality instruction across the board, and we have a very comparable gauge with that as well. So we will be providing some additional training on that on Thursday at our principal's meeting, but just wanted to make you all aware where we've started.
Excuse me. I need to take a step back, because there was a motion on the floor, was seconded to pull that item out. We never voted on that motion. So to table that item for future discussion, right, even if it comes for action. So would you please call the roll on that motion to pull the item out from that pile?
Mr. Baron.
Yes.
Mr. Eileen.
Yes.
Mrs. Laurie.
Yes.
Mr. Connor.
Yes.
Dr. Gupta.
Yes.
Mr. DePaul.
No.
Mr. Gilio.
Yes.
Dr. Farmer.
Yes.
Mr. Poe.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Sorry, Mr. Dr. Davis. I had, you know, the motion was on the floor, and we moved on to the next.
Yes, sir. That's completely fine. I can repeat what I just said, or if anybody has any questions. We just wanted to keep everyone updated on that evaluation system and how well that feedback was received, and how well that was done by Ms. Brown in that training about two weeks ago, and we're going to continue that for that continuity and consistency for our, for our division just in general. And we will do that at our principal's meeting on Thursday and get some more feedback on that.
Mrs. Laurie.
So I've been, I've not been teaching since 2021. So I was just wondering, is that, is there, is this cycle so many years into for new teachers, and then for seasoned teachers, they just do, what is it, like a self-evaluation we used to do on ourselves, or things like that? Is that rotation still part of it, or no?
Yes, ma'am, it is. That is by Code of Virginia. So as long as we have evidence of a summit of evaluation, that is what that follows. It's not just by years of experience, but evidence of that summit of evaluation on all of those indicators. And then we would go to an interim, where you're focusing always on student academic progress. That's one of the goals. And then the second one would be a goal of choice, along with our SMART goals throughout the year. All right.
Other question for Dr. Davis? Thank you. The next one is new accreditation and accountability standards.
Yes. So, good evening. Before I turn this over to Dr. Davis, and she provides an overview of the new accountability and accreditation model, I do want to take a moment just to frame for you all where we are as a division. So about 20 years ago, and looking at the data, in 2005, Lynchburg City Schools ranked 75th among Virginia's 131 school divisions. Since then, there've been some ebbs and flows, but overall, our standing has declined. Based on our preliminary raw scores, we currently rank 122 out of 130, 131 divisions across the state. The final scores are expected next week. We were anticipating them this week, but they will be out next week, the week of October 13th. These early results show not only differences from school to school, but also some broken or missing systems and processes that are essential for our overall improvement. And I want to always explain, systems, when I talk about systems, those are the structures that guide how we operate, how we make decisions, and how we maintain accountability. Processes are the steps that we take to make those systems work every day. So I'll give you an example, if I'm talking about human resources or personnel. When you think about it in that vein, the, the system piece, it organizes how we recruit, how we support our employees, but processes are those steps, like posting our positions, making sure that we're screening applicants, we're doing proper onboarding. And whenever those systems and processes are not aligned, those results will become inconsistent, and that reflects in where we are now in general. So over the past 90 days, I have focused on listening and learning, reviewing the structures that guide our work, and what I've found confirms that we do need stronger systems and clearer processes across the division. Basically, how we're doing the work that we're doing, okay, and why we're doing it, and the steps to make it, to make it better. So I do think our next step, a next step is just to make sure that the way we work is clear, that is consistent, and it's connected, so that everyone, including myself, more importantly, myself, is accountable and moving in the same direction, so that we can best serve kids. Our full improvement plan, which will outline the findings from a 90-day review. Um, our full improvement plan, which will outline the findings from a 90-day review and the next steps moving forward, will be presented to the board and the public at the October 21st board meeting. And it actually falls in line beautifully, because the release of the final state data will come out next week. So it'll come out next week, and then the following week, um, we'll have that full presentation. But I wanted to give a level of context, because I know that all kinds of numbers are floating. There are all kinds of conversations that are happening. But I wanted to give you context as to where we are, and sort of that, that, those ebbs and flows. And then, yes, there hasn't been a decline in that ranking, um, across the last 20 years. And being able to come forward with you all in just a few weeks with, based on that final data that we'll have, and say, this is our direction and our plan for moving forward. And, um, and really having to focus on the main thing, which we say is teaching and learning. But how do we simplify those processes? How do we put systems in place that make sense? And how do we have processes that make sense and clear out all the minutia? And, um, all the extraneous stuff that gets in the way of being able to teach kids. So you'll see a very simplified presentation, um, of my findings and what our next steps are, because I want us to really focus on, how do we, um, how do we band together to do things, a few things really, really well, you know, and support kids? And not do so much stuff and just, you know, hey, we're going to throw it out there and we hope it sticks. We got to have a system and a process to make sure that it, that it works for us and that it's sustainable, regardless of who's in this seat. So I just wanted to give that little bit of context there and let you know where we're going with that. And as Dr. Davis, um, goes over the new accreditation accountability model, I know some of you saw that probably in the spring, and you hear a lot in the news, but I wanted to, we wanted to make sure that she was able to present that tonight. When we come back in two weeks, you see the data and you'll see how it all align to this. Thank you.
Dr. Davis?
Thank you so much for that. So as Dr. Majet mentioned, um, this will be a brief overview, and I want to provide this in manageable chunks, so folks have an opportunity to digest it. And as you all have questions, I encourage you to seek me out and ask anything that you may have. But as we flow through the new state accreditation framework, we've heard accreditation for a very long time. What the state is, is moving towards is a school performance and support framework. So when you start to see that, school performance and, and, um, support framework, know that that is essentially replacing what was called accreditation previously. Go to the next slide. So with that comes performance categories. There are going to be four performance categories that you'll see when the reporting, uh, comes out. We either have distinguished, on-track, off-track, or needs intensive support. And that is determined by point values. And I'll get into that in just a couple more slides. But you can see the point values listed below and what categorizes each of those performance categories. One of the things to note on here is we can't just rest solely on those point values, because, because schools that are federally identified as targeted or additional targeted support and improvement will have their category lowered by one. So no matter what those points say, if you see a TSI or an ATS I school, those performance categories will be lowered by one. So those federal school identifications that I just spoke about, that's the second identifier. So based on federal requirements, there are three categories, and we have fallen under this umbrella for a while. Um, we currently have schools under one of these statuses, uh, here. So you have that comprehensive support and improvement school, so a CSI school. And that's that Title I, um, school where they're struggling the most. We currently have schools that fall under TSI, so that targeted support and improvement system. And that's when some of our subgroups, our student groups, are struggling the most. And ATS I is that third category, and we do have schools that have been identified under ATS I as well, currently. And we have, those are schools that are consistently having student groups that struggle the most. So when they see consecutive years of subgroups, subgroups struggling, we fall in that ATS I category for needs and supports based on that subgroup or student grouping. So where do the points come into play at? It's different for elementary, middle, and high school. So elementary point value, 65% of those point categories are going to come from mastery on those, uh, SOL tests. So just the pure raw data of who has passed and who has not. That growth is 25% for elementary, 20% in middle, and it changes to graduation at high. And then you have readiness. And in that readiness category, attendance falls in that as well. And then it ebbs and flows a little bit through middle school and high school for readiness and what those three E's mean. And I will go more in-depth when we, uh, when we get to that, to that point. But I wanted everyone to have an understanding of where these point values are coming from, so that when you see them, you understand the identification and what makes up each of those pieces. Growth comes from, uh, retakes on tests and a pass. So if you've heard of things like an expedited retake on a test, and you're coming from those, that's where those categories are coming from. So what are the key changes that you can look for? They're point-based, so exactly what we've gone over and how do you get points? It's important to understand that every child that takes one of these tests is going to get some type of point value. So if it's an advanced pass rate, there's a 1.25. If they're proficient, so they pass the test, that's one point. For a student who is a fail basic, that is a range, it's 0.75. And anything below that fail basic is a 0.25. So every student is earning point values in these categories. It is very important to note that. You see science and EOC, and EOC stands for end of course. And you see the same, uh, pass rates along that. Notice that there's just no fail below basic on that science and EOC. We also have growth, so any students in grades four through eight that are able to show growth in reading and math, we have that point value that is, um, attributed to that. High school mastery is another key change. And the English language learners, and here's, here's the key component to the ELL students. It used to be that ELL students had 11 semesters to get acclimated before their SOL tests started to count. And now there are three semesters. So once a stu, an ELL student is in our, in our system, in our school system, they have three semesters essentially to get acclimated, and those SOL tests will now count. So we lost eight semesters off of that with that change. The other key changes here are advanced coursework. So students who are enrolled in advanced coursework, um, for EOC, math classes in middle school can earn extra points. So that was a big push, uh, knowing that we, we made some changes in math this past year that we're currently under. Uh, and our subgroups, previously, subgroups were 30 for them to be counted. So any subgroup that had 30 or more were counted. If it was under that, they were not counted in those, in those, uh, totals or point values. That has changed to 15. Any subgroup that has 15 students in it, it's counted in that rating. If a subgroup does not have 15, those points are redistributed into other categories, um, for equality. We also have the three E's, so subgroup would be, um, like our flack students, our ELL students, students who are economically disadvantaged. So as we see those, and then you have the, um, the group, the whole group or the whole school. Uh, you also have your three E's for enrollment, employment, and enlistment, and that's going to fall in for our high school students. So heavy emphasis on that, and students who earn extra points, uh, or can earn extra points in those three E's category, and that is enrollment. So if they're college-ready courses for AP dual enrollment, um, or other, other qualifying assessments like IB, um, if we were to have that. Employment, so CTE completers, um, and understanding the difference in a completer for CTE, they would get additional point value for that. And any enlistment for armed services, vocational aptitude, so that ASVAB test, um, that is discussed. So any participation in that would get more point values for, um, for those students.
All righty. So that's what I have for, that's what I have for our overview this evening. Answer any questions that you.
Questions for Dr. Davis?
Yep.
Mrs. Laurie?
Um, on, uh, screen number four, on the graduation, does that 15% mean? 15% did pass or didn't? I mean, did graduate or didn't graduate?
It's going to be for graduation passing, so that graduate, that pass rate, yes.
Passing, okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Same, similar question, with graduation versus readiness? You didn't go into what made up readiness, except it may be, um, attendance.
And, and the three E's, um, for the high school students, that's included in that readiness category. It's attendance for elementary and middle.
So we're going past graduation, who graduation is not as important? Is that what it's, because it's weighted at 15 versus 35?
I'm not going to say it's not important, more so is it's a standalone category, whereas the readiness has a couple of components within that, um, for graduation rate, the readiness, and, um, um, attendance component. So it just has more under that category for high school.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Other question, Mr. Carter?
Back to, I think it's screen, the one with the federal school identification.
Yes, sir.
They have comprehensive CSI, TSI, and then ATS I.
Yes, sir.
With the focus on these ATS I schools, would that help contribute to an improvement in the achievement gap that we're facing now? If we start to address these shortcomings?
Yes, sir, absolutely.
So that's what, so what schools would, if we, what schools, well, I don't probably want to bring it up. But, so these schools would be, they have additional resources focused on specific things to bring those scores up?
Yes, sir. In the past, we have had additional funding that has been towards that, but there is this, and I will say, there's a significant amount of work for that evidence-based instruction and some of those components that go into that. And, uh, we had eight schools identified in either TSI or ATS I last year, and we worked extensively with them on their plans. If we were to do that, we would change up, uh, now that we have a better knowledge and the improvement system. We would work really hard for this 25, 26 year to meet that, yeah.
Other, Mr.?
So, go ahead, go ahead.
Ladies first?
Well, then, so then if, if that was last year, then this year, um, um, Dr. Majet said that we'll get the scores next week, or tomorrow, or something, he said.
They should be released next.
So then that will change where we could be?
It could potentially change.
Okay.
That's, that's why we don't like to do a lot of preliminary and have the what ifs.
Got you, got you.
That's why I backed off.
Yes, sir, thank you. Thank you.
I'd like the, the board to know that local, uh, military recruitment officers are chomping at the bit to have us have the ASVAB tested more often because of the benefit to our students. Now that I see it on the board here, do you know anything about how it improves or is related to our test score?
I'm not sure what you're asking.
It's, it's an evaluation piece of the state. I didn't know that.
So that, because it is new, um, putting that ASVAB component in there. So again, it goes into that percentage if students are participating in that testing. Because it would, it would be listed under one of those three E's for enlistment purposes, um, if they were to follow that for that ASVAB testing.
Very nice, I hope we can get that done. As a side note, uh, a month ago, I think, I walked into EC glass, and there was, no, I was at Heritage High School at the lunchtime, and there were so many students in military uniform, just eating at the tables. You could see, like, a number, just a number pop out, and it was, it was good to see so many, so.
Other questions for Dr. Davis? Going, going back to the performance category, and I know the scores are going to be coming up. Where would we be in terms of the numbers on the performance category?
We, we won't be able to identify that until the scores finalize, because then we'll know what our point values are in each category, and we'll be able to total that out. And then we also have to, um, incorporate the federal school identification. We could essentially fall in distinguished for point value, but if we're also labeled in a, a TSI category, it would drop us to on-track. So that is, that's the other key component to that.
Okay.
Good, other questions? Thank you, thank you, Dr. Davis.
Mr.? So I, I think I follow the points-based piece of this, which is pretty, pretty clear, based on the test. Do we know what kind of extra points, I mean, what does that look like for the enrollment, employment, enlistment, uh, portion?
There hasn't been, um, additional information provided. There's been a lot of focus on just, because it was not counted in last year, they did a lot of in that, in the growth category, or, excuse me, not the growth category, the readiness, and focused a lot of emphasis on attendance, because they were still working on those components. We should be getting updates throughout the year to talk about what that specifically looks like and how those point values would enhance our student.
Scores that are coming out now aren't going to include these new key changes? That won't happen until next year?
They do include the key changes, but.
We don't know what they.
But last year's scores that we're getting, again, not obviously for this year, but last year's scores, all of that readiness was based off of attendance, not necessarily the three E's. No, coming up, that will be a factor.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Good, thank you, Dr. Davis.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Major. All right, we up to item G, discipline committee meeting, October 9th at 3:30 PM. Finance and facilities, October 14th at 3:30 PM. Next school board meeting on October 30, 21st at 5:00 PM. LSCR on October 21st at 3:30 PM, and academic success committee on October 28th at 3:30 PM.
One thing, um, I will be out of town, so I'll need to electronically be attending the October 21st.
That we can talk.
Okay.
Thank you.